Select border points one and the alternate in the.
She wants to put in, you know, on the backside of her.
The stupidest thing I did is I didn't buy the property.
So if anyone wants to do it ahead of me, that's all.
Please, when I, when I decided, so she goes, I didn't know how to.
I don't know that we jumping out of a baby.
What'd you do to it?
And I'm like, that is a perfect.
It looks like it's eighty years old now.
Man, it is. It's a second day parking, I said, well, that's passed, because they're not moving out of there.
When I went back the second time to the meeting, and I says, hey, it's not showing up on various.
Well, that's why she wanted to do the behind the place, put a parking place behind it, that's a lot of work.
Sixty ones.
Okay.
I wrote down on the side what parking just exists.
Okay.
I know, I told you, I said, it's not gonna be, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to get a permit from the state to get a cut, and then you're gonna have to put it asphalt, then you're gonna have to get an easement, and I guess it wouldn't be for you, it would be from the homeowners um that have the water line going through, Chris goes, town has nothing to do with that. I said, okay. So I gave her the tools, and I said, before you do that, you should talk to Kevin and get something drawn up of what you wanna do.
Cause all of that land was my, I.
You own it, yeah, yeah.
I was thinking, but almost like if you came enough from the, I mean, I would be, you know, make parking spaces, just.
Oh, that's true, too.
You know what I mean?
I should probably have her just give you, have her, cause her husband's running it now. She's just doing the dentist stuff, he's doing the, uh, you wanna call it ministry. I said, probably just call you and see what the, see what they can do.
Yeah, she's really nice, I like that.
Oh, I know, phenomenal. Much better than, uh, Mr. Cohen, and I, that guy was an interesting individual, to say the least.
Yes, he was, him and my father used to go at all.
And it was probably over nickels if I know Cohen.
Oh, yeah, both of them.
Okay, uh, say we're at, uh, six thirty-one, uh, so it's called the Water of the August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting of the twenty-fourth.
Ah, crap, I forgot. I'm gonna mooch off you.
First order is minutes from July twenty-third.
Oh, thanks. I left mine at the house.
I wasn't here for this one, so. That's right, you're on vacation. I'm on vacation, yeah, it was the one time I took time off, yeah.
Good, good for you.
Thanks.
I know this is probably on this meeting, but do we ever get a reply from Chris on the, uh, for, um, sewer's capacity or anything like that? Has that ever come back from Chris?
Sewer's capacity?
Yeah, Dick asked, um, um.
Chris is looking into it.
Chris was looking into our sewer.
Boston and Sampson any.
Okay, alright, well.
He hasn't got back to me.
Put that on this, this week's minutes.
I love that last statement, right?
Yeah, 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 I'm just curious about that, cause.
I would like to see a thirty, thirty-six thousand gallon tanker truck or two to make it up. Pump the thirty-six hundred, thirty-six thousand gallons of water into the sewer line and see what happens in one day.
Joe was telling me that the DCR line is what's causing a lot of the I N I.
Yeah.
Cause it hasn't been repaired in, yeah, about half a century. Cause he spent all kinds of time with.
Half a century, I got news for you.
Okay, maybe a century.
Yes, that sounds better.
Considering the flow meter was fifty-five years old, and they had to bring a guy out of retirement to fix it.
Do I have a motion?
I'm not gonna make any motions anymore.
Yes, you're.
The younger generation has to.
Well, leaves it up to you the.
No, it's the younger generation, right?
Yes.
I asked for motions, don't make them.
Well, I was out of town, so I don't know if I can approve.
No, you're.
Motion to approve minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing them, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next we have A and R plan for lot nine R on Britton Drive, uh, by Mr. Blair.
I'm so happy it's set up there, the locust map, not to scale, I'm seeing, I'm looking at that. Wait a minute, that's not the scene. No, okay.
So what's, what's different from what, uh, there?
Oh, well, I didn't think anything, but, uh, George said that they forgot to put the meets and bounds. It looks like they took some of the old lot, which they did, and so he had to just do a new A and R plan to show the meets and bounds.
Oh, because the old one actually took away your access to your, uh.
Up, 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 yeah.
It's got a hundred and fifty, one point five. This is to, just to the right of, um, Hilltop, is that, it's the.
To the left. To the right, if you're looking at it from the street.
From the street.
Oh, from, okay. From the street is to the right.
This is one of the A and Rs, it was on Britten, oh, there's a couple other ones on the left side of where Hilltop is gonna go, if I remember right.
Yeah.
Only thing different about Lucas, those two don't connect.
I'm sure I understand.
Arrowhead and Bear Hill.
Yeah, you can't.
Can't get through there, you can, but it's sort of a little bit of drop off.
So the original lot lines, which is shown hashed, correct?
Yes.
So.
Are you, are you adjusting lot lines per? Are these adjustments just to get this particular lot in compliance?
Well, we thought we had already made the adjustment, and, and I think the planning board proved what we thought was already done, but.
Okay.
George says that we didn't include the, the meets and bounds and lines correctly, so that it wasn't a real lot. So it needed to be just reaffirmed more than.
Which would have shut down our, uh, our, uh, what do you call it, lots, I'm brain deaf.
Lot.
State lots, because there'd be no access.
Lot eight and nine must be estate lots.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
So this corrects an error in the book, in the planning book that.
Yeah, okay, okay.
These are the old driveways, the real skinny ones, right?
They're still, yeah.
The only thing is, I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing the frontage on lot nine and lot eight.
On the Mylar?
Yeah. Is it supposed, is it supposed to be on here?
Well, this one's only for.
I don't think it has to, cause he's just doing nine R.
Unless you're trying to get all three lots approved, which would be.
He's not.
So Norm, if, if you look at the lot to the left, lot nine B.
Yeah.
You see that little section, uh, on the right side of the lot, it's a little over fifty-two feet, just that small section. The rest is a hundred thirty-four.
Yeah.
If you take that fifty-two and kinda look at the other two lots, it's clear the other two lots have at least fifty.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, but we're not deciding on those.
Okay.
Strictly lot nine R, so.
Yeah.
Which is conforming. But they are, yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, nine R, not nine B.
So just cleaning up the books, because nine actually loses some frontage. Oh, no. It's always in there, okay.
We, we took away from that lot that was originally approved there, that was already a lot.
Yeah.
So Julian didn't include it on the plan, but we didn't realize we took fro, we took area away from it. So I was just gonna do an eighty-one X, but I couldn't, cause it actually had new lot lines.
Yeah.
The only way you can do an eighty-one X is if you're not creating any new lot lines, otherwise it's an A and R.
That's fine. Lot nine isn't developed, right? It hasn't been built?
That's correct.
Nine and eight, yeah. They have not? No, they have not, they're part of Hilltop Estates, if I'm not mistaken.
Right.
So it looks like you've kinda borrowed six feet from the other lots to make this conforming, huh? Yeah, cause otherwise it'd been one forty-eight, and that'd have been a. Which is fine, we're only deciding on nine R, and it is what it is, so.
Yep.
Yeah, nine R, I don't, everything looks good to me.
So, I have a motion?
Yes.
Already did.
No, you didn't.
Did I?
No.
I said, move to endorse, didn't I, something like that?
Exactly.
A little quiet, but we were all talking.
That's right, we didn't think you were making motions, Nick, that's why.
I'm not, but I'm not.
What are you doing? Which way are you going here? It's time for me to go home.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So Norm, if you'll just hand me the paper copy once you guys sign it?
Yep.
I'll give you five.
This would be, when we get to, to the public hearing.
Uh, why, why are you talking about the public?
I said, when we get to it, this would be a good thing to maybe add in as an example, because some, most of our A and Rs never come with locust maps, stuff like that.
Well. Well, we have it as a submission requirement, so we just have to.
Oh, we do?
Yes, we do, so we just have to enforce submission requirements, that's all.
Okay. Okay. Yeah.
The doors open over there, so you hear, you hear, you hear yourself talking.
I was echoing when they first turned it on.
I was sitting over there at the ConCon meeting the other night, and I could hear everybody's, you know, it was like I had two conversations going on.
It's like when your ears are blocked and you can like hear your own voice in your head, you know?
Wait a minute.
They do that all the time.
There are other people, other me?
So Norm, when we get to next agenda item, if it's, if you're okay with this, I'd like to just, I'd like to just go through each of the questions the planning board had, and town council's response, one by one. On the homeowners, just to move it along. Cause a couple of them are really minor things.
That's the Jim Calle guy.
I saw that.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
Ninety-five, ninety-five, and he was really sharp, right up to the end there.
Son of a gun.
He's got his name on a lot of plans, I'll tell you.
Normers.
I see they're trying to sell his old house, again, Chuson Street.
Is it a purple house?
Is that all set? The Mylar's all set, Norm?
Yep.
We need to sign this one, too.
That's what we're doing.
Maybe for, in the verse.
Okay. I don't, let me borrow the black pen back.
I didn't know what we were doing, but, but this doesn't go to.
Oh, this is. No, that doesn't go to the registry, so that doesn't matter. Thank you, my friend, you are.
Alright.
I was gonna say.
Okay. Next item is discussion, Hilltop Estate Owners Association.
Okay, so Norm, is it okay if I just go through these one by one?
Yes, yes.
Chuck them off. Right, please, so the planning board had some questions and comments on the homeowners association document, so I'm just gonna go through the questions that they had that I sent to town council, and just go through the response, a couple of them were really minor things, and I think one actually briefly got discussed at last, at the last meeting.
Remember that?
So number one, um, under Article Three, purpose, lists the various aspects of the development that will be the responsibility of the homeowners' trust to maintain. The planning board believes that snow removal on the roadway should be included in the list of items to be maintained by the homeowners, is that common practice in cases such as this? And town council said, yes, that normally is, but it wouldn't hurt to add that into the homeowners' documents, so is that okay with you, Cleef, if we add snow removal into that?
It should be in it anyway, I mean, cause they're responsible for it, it's a private road, I think it's an assumption, it's an assumed, it's an assumed thing, but you can put it in there.
Yeah.
Cause I can hear him now calling the town, hey.
Yeah, and then calling you to, yeah.
So, um.
You know what makes up the word assume?
Yeah. Ask you me.
So that's the first one, so that's good. The plan.
Before you pass through that, what about the rest of that response?
Oh, it says, does no harm in expressing the obligation in the declaration, it could be inserted in Article Four and include retaining walls, stormwater facilities, or any individual lots, catch basins, ponds, outlets, et cetera. Are you okay with that, Cleef?
Yes, I just wanna, uh, know, how am I gonna know, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to write it down, but I don't even know what articles you're talking, you're gonna give this to me?
This is the, yeah, within the homeowners trust, I will send a document to you and George, basically, with these things highlighted, yeah, these additions highlighted, so good catch, Tim, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure those are in there, cause again, the assumption, I don't have any assumptions, I wouldn't, then know when they're buying a house, this is everything they're on the hook for.
So.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
So the, the next one is, so we're all okay with that one. Um, the planning board believes that the items should be the responsibility of the homeowners in perpetuity, is that common practice in legal? And she said, I assume that the items referred to are the roadway and stormwater facilities and other common trust properties, as we just discussed. Yes, maintenance of the trust property is the obligation of each homeowner acting through and by the association, it's a legal and binding responsibility unless the trust is terminated or revoked. Some plant, planning boards require the declaration trust to include a provision saying that the trust cannot be revoked without the town's consent, which I think that's already in there. The purp, the purpose for adding this provision is to ensure that in the event that the association, association is terminated, the homeowners have made some provision to ensure that the roadway and other trust property continues to be maintained. If Rutland does not seek such approval rights, it can delete that provision from Article thirteen of the trust. So, I really don't, I don't, I really don't think there's any, I think that was just a clarification, I think, that normally it is in perpetuity, but there is a provision, I think, in there that we'll discuss later on, that, you know, in a couple minutes, that, um, that they do have to come before the planning board if they plan on revoking the trust for any reason.
I think that's fine, but the only other thing is, that if they wanted to bring it up to standard, like planning board or road standards, they have that ability to do that, like if they.
And, and have it accepted if the town will, is willing to accept it.
Yeah, if, if they could get it accepted by the town, so let's say they put the sidewalks and all the stuff that you gave waivers for sidewalks and, or drainage and, or whatever. I mean, at some point, they can probably get it, if they brought it before the planning board, up and, and brought it up to town standards. I mean, I, I would think that they could, yeah, then get it accepted by the town, not, not that they do that, but, you know.
I wouldn't have an issue with that.
As long as they brought it up to standard.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
I think that's the same for any private roadway, correct? If they wanna bring it up to standards and, and ask the town to accept it, they can do that.
Right.
Okay.
And we've got the provision in there, again, that they can't revoke it without.
Planning board approval.
Excellent, okay.
So that's number two, that was more of a clarification.
It's on their deed, though, how they, how would they do that?
Good question, I don't, I don't even wanna get into that, because I don't know.
Good luck.
Number three, would any town water or sewer infrastructure within the town right away be the responsibility of the homeowner, homeowners of the town to maintain? Should, that's the, depends on the town's practice, if a town installs the water sewer infrastructure, it is typical for a town to accept it, if they are connected to the town's public water and or sewer system. If the water or sewer infrastructure is installed by the developer, some towns choose not to accept the same, in which case it should be expressly referenced in Article Three of the trust. Now, I think this is a good time to discuss what we started to discuss. Our DPW director has expressed that, in the case of Hilltop Estates, I believe that he wanted all water and sewer infrastructure, I believe, from the pump station, right to where the actual private roadway starts, to be.
Private, right.
Private, but we're not sure that's copacetic, because if it's in the public right away, connected to a pump station, and in a roadway that's already been accepted by the town, we're not sure. I'm, I'm still waiting to hear from town council on that, they haven't answered me on that, but I don't know if the town can do that.
Let, let me say this, too, when that, once I put that in the road, anybody on that street can tie into it.
Right.
So I, I don't know how you could, I don't even.
How can you segregate, yeah, if other people start tying into it?
Yeah, like, let's say Norm Septhick goes, you can just run a sewer line down and put it right in.
Be a long haul.
Yes, it would, but I mean.
But he could.
Yeah, so like, if you couldn't get to the perk, or, you know, and if you didn't wanna do a Title Five, you could say just, you know, you can hook into the sewer.
And, and my point to this was, I just wanted to make sure in the HOA, that at the edge of the development, if that's gonna be private, that's owned by the HOA, outside of that subdivision, that's where town council's gotta tell us, can we or can we not make that private? I, I don't know.
And do I have to run laterals to the existing houses?
Were you intending that the town take over the water and sewer going uphill top?
Well, let me say this, when I got this approved by Joe Buckley, he assisted on an easement, and he wanted to, he wanted to take ownership of it, however.
I remember that discussion.
I don't, I don't care either way, I mean, the homeowners are, are, let's face it, I mean, how many problems do you have with the sewer line? You know, I mean, the, right now, coming from their house to the street is everybody's issue, I don't care where you own, y, y, you know, the town doesn't. If you got a problem with your sewer line between the house and the street, that's the, it's your problem, not the town's. So that part of it's, but, but, I don't, you don't see too many lines, to, town sewer lines, I mean.
Well, it's water and sewer you want's private, correct?
Yeah, and it's okay.
Yeah, I don't have a, I, if, cause I remember Joe, we had this discussion, and if, if the new DPW chief wants to do something different, I'm fine with that, just call.
So I think, I think what we need to do, because we can, we can go back and forth, but it's ultimately Chris.
Yeah.
So I think at the next meeting, maybe we should have Chris attend, and have Cleef here, and, and discuss that, and get that wrapped up.
Yeah, and we need the attorney's opinion, cause again, this, I'm not an attorney, but I can't believe we can force the homeowners to take responsibility outside of something of the subdivision.
Right.
I, I just, I don't see how that's possible, but again, I'm not an attorney, so maybe you can.
Yeah, but I agree with you, cause like I said, other people are gonna tie into it, it's, it's, it's on town property.
Even if it is allowable, it sounds like a, a potential logistical nightmare.
Yeah.
For what you're saying. So, so even if it's legal, does town really wanna do that?
It's a cost, how, how do you bill when something breaks?
So, so let me do this, let, let's, let's put it, let's put this on hold, I'll have, I'll ask Chris to attend our next meeting on the twenty-seventh, and we can discuss this, are you gonna be around, Cleef?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, the, the other thing, too, is, the, the, water and sewer department, the water and sewer fees go into a separate fund, it's not like it comes from the taxpayers of the town, tho, those people are gonna pay water and sewer fees, so.
Right.
I mean, I can see that that's gonna be, yeah, you, I don't know how you do it in, in the street.
Yeah, because.
Above, yeah, I, but.
Because town government, town departments are usually not allowed to go in and do work on private property, so I would think that the opposite would apply, where?
If it's in this case, they can.
You know, to Cleef's point, you just brought up a very good issue, if they're paying water and sewer fees, and all of that lines in their subdivisions are owned by them, that water and sewer fee that they're paying for doesn't go to the repair of their, of their lines, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me, if I was buying a house.
Well, that's true, that's, I think that's why Joe Buckley thought that it would be best to.
I'm just thinking, if something does go wrong on Hill, on the Hilltop driveway.
Yeah.
Who are they gonna call?
Well, they're gonna call, it's Chris.
They're gonna call DPW.
Right.
And if that, if that becomes a health, safety hazard, guess what?
Town's gotta fix it, well, that happened with the ones on Britten now.
Well, if the town installed it.
And.
No.
Joe fixed it.
If it becomes a health and safety hazard.
The town has to, has a legal obligation to step in and repair it, correct?
Now, they can go back and bill them, correct?
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, they can do.
That's why we have things that we hold back. I'm fine, I just wanna know that, that the legal ramifications and get Chris to weigh in on it.
Well, like you said.
Yeah, my, my question is, on this, in this whole thing, is if we didn't install it as a town, or we don't, we didn't have inspections as, as it was installed, how are we gonna sign off on that?
Well, they'll inspect, they inspect, they don't let you bury it without inspecting.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so was it, so they signed off on the, the installation of it, and then you're saying, there's a certain point, though, that they don't wanna own it? And that's at the bottom of the drive.
Cleef, now, if I'm. We've already put in a majority of them, they've already inspected it.
Up to Britten now, Joe's already signed off on that, on that, if you wanna call it flan, blind flange at the end of that, correct?
Yeah.
So the town's actually, quote, accepted that from the pump station to Britten now.
So that's, that's why, let's get Chris here, we need to, we need to wrap this up, and, and make a decision as far as, okay, this is how it's going to be. I personally think that, you know, even if it's, if it's legally acceptable for the, for the, for it to be private, I don't think it makes sense for the town, it sounds like. It can, it can cause potential issues, and we have to talk about the water and sewer line within, within the subdivision, too, from what Norm said. So, um, so, yeah, we have to, we have to get this, uh, decided and wrapped up, so we can move forward. Okay, so this one's a real, this one's an easy one, this is just something Dick wanted to put in for clarification. Article four responsibilities, the second sentence should be edited to read, the terms of this trust shall run with the land and impose a burden on the lots described, and Dick wanted to add in, in Article two above. He wanted to add in, in Article two, just to clarify that, that's where it is, so town council had no problem with that, that's just basically a clarification statement. Now, now we move on to Article five beneficiaries. I said, the planning board has concern with the text in the first sentence that reads, that in the event that the lot owner combines another lot as designated, and we start to talk about this when you came last time, Cleef, the board does not want to allow combining of lots in this development, as it could alter the lot and unit count, could the board have this removed? Cleef, you made a comment at the last meeting, that you really don't mind if this gets removed, cause that's not the intention to combine lots in the future, correct?
Well, yeah, but I don't know that. Legally, can you stop someone from combining a lot? I don't, I don't think that, I, I think you can say, you can combine the lots, but the homeowners still spill, split it one, one night, or whatever it is. I think, I think that would be the, I thought about that a little bit afterwards, I thought that would be.
So if someone combines lots, they just have to pay?
Two nights.
Two, twice what the normal lot owner pays.
That's all I wanna do.
And, and. However, however you word it, I don't know.
And from a, from a practical standpoint, if you're, if you're a homeowner, right? Unless you, why would you ever wipe out two hundred thousand dollars worth of value by combining it to one, you wouldn't, you'd leave it. You'd use it, but you would leave, I would say you'd leave it as a lot, I mean, I would never.
I think what the board would be more concerned with is future subdivision of the lots. More than combining of the lot.
Which it says right on the estate lots.
So there we go, so, so I, in from the the discussions we're having, I don't think we need to do anything with this, I think that will take care of itself, it sounds like.
I I agree.
Okay, does the board agree with that? I know, Norm, you're shaking your head a little bit, but.
I would add that language, though, that even though it it's, it's not, even though if you combine the two, the two lots or if they're in common ownership. It doesn't matter, they're still gonna pay one ninth, so that there'll be.
Each lot pays one ninth.
Each lot pays one ninth, even if you combine them, even if they're under one owner, let's say one guy bought three.
So, so hold on, so.
Each lot as originally planned.
There you go, that's the right word.
Okay, hold on, let's, let's, let me write this down.
Shown on the original plan.
All right, how do we want this worded, gentlemen? Yeah, yeah, but I need that, I need to write down, so how would you like that sentence?
Original town of plan referenced by whatever the recorded plan was.
Book and page, yep.
Okay, all right, how is the sentence gonna read, everyone's throwing out words here, how is the sentence going to read?
If you want me to? So each lot as shown in the original plan as.
Hold on, hold on. Yeah, write that fast.
An originally approved plan, I'm sorry.
Hold on.
Put the date of the plan.
Yeah, yeah.
In the book and page.
Okay, each lot is shown on the original approved plan, now go ahead.
Responsible for one ninth of the homeowner's fee. And and say, whether combine them or is under the same ownership.
Or what, or whatever.
Right, or whatever, it won't matter.
Back to the original plan.
Somebody could come in, I want all nine, I want a friggin estate back here, uh, compound.
Okay, all right, so that's all set, we got that language all set for that first one to beneficiaries?
I think that works.
So the next one, the planning board is concerned with paragraph five, at no time does the town want to become responsible for the maintenance of this development. Does this paragraph put the town at risk of that, or does this paragraph simply reinforce the town's emergency rights of maintenance? Said, I do not recommend using the language in section five, typically, we insert a provision along the lines of the one below, which makes it clear that the town. Never has any obligation to maintain the subdivision, assumes no liability, so now, if you go to the top page, Tim. Tim had me reach out to town council, so, um, so town council added this following. Language to the paragraph that you see underlined. So if everyone's okay, if if everyone's okay with this, this is what town council's recommending get, that gets added in.
Yeah, cuz she's basically covering the town when I, or when they, when they put this, when I read the paragraph, I'm going like, perfect.
Yeah, so she did a paragraph, but then Tim wasn't completely satisfied, so she had this underlining, she added the underlining, underline language after. So Cle, are you okay with this language?
Could you please repeat it?
Well, it's it's entire paragraph who's, oh.
Oh, I never, I never heard it, I don't have it.
So, all right, let me read the paragraph.
Real paragraph.
In the, all right, in the event that the town of Rutland determines that the lot owners and or trust has failed in their obligation to maintain the roadway. The stormwater infrastructure and or other trust property, the town shall have the right upon written notice to the trust. And the subsequent failure to remedy the maintenance issue within thirty days of notice thereof to enter upon the property. From time to time for the purpose of inspecting the same and ensuring compliance with the terms of this declaration. And for the purpose of taking any and all actions necessary or convenient to abate or remedy any violation thereof. All costs incurred by the town in connection with its performance of such maintenance of the property, including without limitation. Reasonable attorney's fees incurred shall be reimbursed by the lot owner slash trust to the town within thirty days from the date of demand. Therefore, and if not paid within the time allowed, the town may assess such costs against the owner slash trust and such assessment shall become a lien on the lots. Which may be collected and enforced in the manner affixed by law for the collection of taxes. As an alternative or in addition to this process, the town may recover its costs by means of a betterment assessment on the lot owners. The town shall have the option to enforce the terms thereof, but does not have the obligation to do so. The provisions of this paragraph shall survive the expiration or earlier termination of this declaration. No remedy herein conferred upon or reserved to the town shall exceed any other remedy herein or existing. At law or in equity provided, but shall be cumulative, and in addition to every other remedy given. Hereunder or now or hereafter existing at law or in equity borne by statute, the town does not undertake any liability or obligation relating to the addition of the trust property. The trustee and its success shall comply with the requirements of any state or local laws, rules, regulations or bylaws. Applicable to the lots or the trust property or the use thereof.
Condensed, it covers the town's part.
Well, but, but there's no, you need a standard, like, wha- what's, what's the standard of? I mean, you ever been down, uh, you know, like Turkey Hill, Rojo, or some of those dirt streets, I mean, who who determines what? Yeah, so I mean, and who determines, like, there's no, there's no real drainage in this except for down that big hill. All of it swells that that go into.
I, I think, honestly, I think this is like they say about certain things in society, you know it when you see it. If there's an issue on the road that's impacting, for for instance, emergency access. If the fire department can't get their personnel down the road because of an issue with the roadway, then that's a problem. I don't think we're talking about a pothole here necessarily.
I know, but it it's too vague.
Yeah, but.
I mean, who who makes the standard, so who goes up there and says, well, that pothole, you know, you got thirty days to fix it, I mean. They don't wanna fix a pothole, they shouldn't have it.
Honestly, Cle, no, no, here's the thing, I don't think you can get specific, because I think it's fairly simple, if it's a private roadway. So, if 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 the emergency access can't get up there for some reason.
Doesn't say that, it says, it says.
It does, but not, 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 not an exact, no.
But the thing is, here's the thing, if we get too specific, we may have an instance that this doesn't cover.
Well, here's the other thing too, you ever heard of reach and apply, you ever deal with the DEP? They write, they write a regulation and then they figure out, well, that should really should apply to this and should apply to that and should apply to that. I'm afraid that's what this paragraph is gonna do, it's gonna, it's gonna open up the town to say whatever they wanna say. There there's just, there's gotta be.
Does this tie into the next item that that you're concerned with, where. We're basically leaving sort of an open door where they can dissolve and then make the town liable, or at least bring it to the board. Where we're, you know, we're advised not to do that, is that, is that, is that your main worry?
Well, so, no, I I would, like, for example, let's say somebody doesn't maintain their driveway. Basically, what Hilltop Estates is, it's just one common driveway that I had it, because the common driveway law. You know, wouldn't let me go a thousand feet and it, you know, and it was a bylaw, so we had to do it this way, so. What that is is just really a driveway, so let's say someone's driveway had an issue, is a town gonna go up there and say, hey, fix your driveway?
No, I don't, no, I don't think that's the way. Cle, hold on, hold on, I don't think that's the way that town has operated.
Think that's realistic.
I don't, I don't.
I I don't think that's real, and I would think, if anything, the town may get a complaint from one of the homeowners. Potentially.
Well, they get, they can complain to the association, but I I'm completely against that paragraph. I I will tell you, it's, it's gonna cause nothing but problems. It it, the town doesn't do that to other private roads.
I guarantee from now on, I guarantee you that, cuz I'm, cuz I I want, I want protection from the town, cuz my fear is, Cle. Is that these HOAs, and this is my experience from the Midwest, they dissolve after five years, and then the town gets stuck with trying to fix everything in.
This is in perpetuity and it's on their deed.
Well, it's it's in perpetuity, but you've also, there's a loophole in here where they can come before the board and dissolve. So I'm, my my fear is that these homeowners have been sold these homes with like, oh, well, you know, if you all decide to. You can bring it before the town and dissolve, and then you don't have HOA dues. That, but I'm just saying, I've seen that happen before, where if every, if it's unanimous and they have an HOA, and it's registered with the state of Massachusetts. And it's, and it's legal, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm just saying, that has happened. This language keeps that from happening for us as the town of Rutland.
I think the planning board protect, is protected, because why would they say, you go, go ahead, yeah, go ahead, dissolve that and we'll take care of everything, planning board. Yeah, but the planning board has the ability, they're the only ones who have the ability to say, you can dissolve, according to the homeowners association. I don't see that happen.
So why would you have two individual paragraphs that contradict each other, saying you can't dissolve, but if you dissolve. Or if there's issues, the town.
I don't care.
Well, but but you're saying, like, if there's an issue, the town can be brought in.
Who said that?
Did you not, if there's a pothole, who's gonna take care of it, did you not, that was an example you just used, right?
But but I said, if the park, the the town comes in and says, I want that pothole fixed, what gives them the right, it's a private road. They would, they they, they don't do that in other private roads, they don't do that to your driveway.
I don't, I don't, I don't think that's what this paragraph is saying.
Yeah, but see, I, I, I've, I've been through so many times when, you know, you 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 put in these regulations and, you know. And and when it's a, a, a good board and and, but when you get guys like Sullivan on there who's an asshole. You just, you you get to a point where he he tries to find every loophole and everything and that he's gonna, and I hope he's listening. Cuz I'm, they did that on purpose, but, uh, uh, that, you know, every, every loophole and every issue, that's gonna open up. The town to be able to go up there and tell them what they, what they're gonna do, and if they don't like, they don't like it, the town's gonna fix it and they're gonna charge them.
And I was on the other extreme, Cle, where I was, if the HOA lets the road fall in disrepair, where I can't get a fire truck. Or a ambulance up there, that was my concern, that's the reason why I brought this up.
Okay, but.
Because I'm fearful if you got a kid up there with, who needs a, what do you call it, uh, nebulizer? And I can't get a fi- I can't get an ambulance up there, and because they've just let the road go in disrepair, that's what that was. That's why I was having.
Say, you couldn't get the fire truck up.
Exactly, my kid passes away, or or somebody, or my, my grandparent that was living in the house died. That, I was using this to protect the town is what, and maybe it's not specific enough.
So, hold on, hold on, I got a remedy, so in the first sentence. In the event that the town of Rutland determines that the lot owners and or trusts has failed in their obligation to paint the roadway. For purposes of emergency access, would that make everyone happy?
Emergency and safety, I mean.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, Tim.
Well, you're adding, you're not taking away.
No.
Yeah.
For purposes of, Tim, hold on, hold on, what, how'd you want that worded, for purposes of?
I I I was saying emergency and safety, but that's as far as I wanted to go, cuz that, those are my only two concerns.
I I can say this, though, without, without fail, the town has that right anyway. They can go away, if you can't get an ambulance in, they can fix it and they can charge the homeowners, I mean, that is a law, they can't, they. They, they can't have a situation where that happens.
So then what would be the pushback to having it in writing?
Right, why would, let 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 me say it from their point of view, if you lived up there, right, and you had a kid. Who had an issue, would you let the road, I mean, you wouldn't let it get like that.
So we're, so basically, you're describing something where everybody's on the same page.
Hold on.
We're just memorializing it.
And that, that's, that's a good point, but that's not necessarily true, I have seen towns where a road has fallen in massive disrepair. And the town has wanted to go and repave it, and the residents say, no, because then people will go too fast. And they refuse to let the town re- repair their road, because they want the potholes and they want all that stuff, because they don't want people to go too fast down their road.
I've never seen that, they put.
I have, I've seen it many times, in Blackstone, it happened in Blackstone.
I I just don't.
My fear is, Cle, is what I was gonna get into when I was gonna buy Michelonis's property up there with Mr. Helly, is that he warned me. That in the past, those two guys who owned that private driveway, got into matches where, we need it fixed. I can't get up it, and Michelonis was like, I ain't paying for it, so Mr. Helly just said, the hell with it, I'm paying for it, and he did it. I don't want, you got nine people now, that was just two, what if you get six out of the nine who says, ah, your road's good enough, I don't care, I don't got any kids, I don't really care.
Well, here's the thing, here's the thing, in, as part of this, they have to pay a fee. Into a fund, and it, and it, that fee i- i- into that fund is to maintain the road, plow the road. So they're gonna pay plowing out of that, they're gonna pay maintenance out of that, and all the other stuff, we did the same thing down in Glenwood Place. I never heard boo about this, and I don't agree with, and Glenwood Place is a hell of a lot worse than that's gonna be.
I guess I don't, I don't see what the big deal of this language is, especially with putting in the proviso for purposes of emergency access.
It it gives the town the right to go up there and tell them what to do, and I don't think, I don't think that should be done.
No, even though it's not a public roadway, the town, you need to have emergency access for ambulances, for to put out fires. What if somebody has a fire on there? So, I I, and and to Britten's point, I don't see the issue in memorialize it in writing, if it's a law anyway. It it doesn't make a difference if we have.
Basically, all saying the same thing. I know that there's pushback, you don't want it in writing, because to your, to your point, it's described a different way later on, but. I I think we should memorialize this in writing.
I I would dis- disagree, you know, respectfully, but I I think, you know, I I think that's a given, I don't think that. I mean, I can't imagine living there.
I don't like givens. It's a given tonight, sitting here saying this now, but people move in and out of neighborhoods with homeowners associations, and. Sometimes associations aren't really diligent when neighborhoods turn over of. Sometimes people don't wanna be the president of the HOA, because it's not a fun job. What happens if fif- ten, fifteen years down the road, the neighborhood turns over and nobody takes leadership and no, and nobody's collecting fees for the HOA?
Norm, I think what we should do is, Cle, you should give your, take this section. Give it to George and say, this is what I want in and out, we've got our section, you just wrote down to KP Law. Those two should get together, cuz one of us are attorneys.
Tim, let's finish going through this, this is the only thing we haven't agreed on so far.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I meant, I'm just saying this section five.
So I could, I could send this paragraph to Cle and George.
Yes.
For their review, and say, hey, this is what town council has recommended we pu- insert. What do you guys think about this, is that okay?
Think you should get with George and and come back and have a response, cuz we could sit here all night and argue about this. And I think you've got good points, I think we have.
It's not an argument, it's a discussion.
It's a healthy discussion.
I meant the wrong, I used the wrong term.
I'm, I'm messing with you.
Yeah, 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 so that's why I think, I think we've all got our points on the table and we're not gonna go any farther with it, so let's just.
So I'll send those to you guys tomorrow.
Okay, I still think it's about suspenders, but okay.
All right, so assessments, this one's another easy one. Dick wanted to clarify this, the the second sentence should be edited to read, the trustee shall raise such terms as he or she shall deem. So, obviously, I don't think you have a problem with that. Town council didn't have a problem with that, last one, amendment determination. Um, so this is again, the board has concern with the last sentence that reads, the trust shall not be terminated without prior written approval of the Rutland Planning Board. So, she said, it's certainly a town's choice and we can require the developer to remove such references. How does the board feel about this? I know the board had some feelings, the board wants to know why this would be an option, that would seem to simply imply that. The town would then be responsible for the maintenance of the items listed earlier in the document. I could see this becoming potentially a legal battle where the homeowners, and hypothetically, the association could come before the board and say, hey. You know, we don't have any leadership, we're not collecting fees, we wanna dissolve the homeowners association, which is not.
And the board says no.
And the board says no.
Then you gotta get an attorney and go to court and fight that battle out.
So, let's, let me ask you this, in your common driveway law, you have any of this shit?
We will someday.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, you've got three houses on a common driveway, you get the same real situation, I mean, so I, you you you're putting so much shit in this. I don't know.
I don't disagree with you on that, right, it should be, we've been, we've talked about it before, it should be consistent. I think leaving this statement in here, which is one of my concerns, is that it's leaving the door open for a discussion between the homeowners of. Well, I don't wanna pay HOA dues.
Right.
Why, and I'm looking at a board that may be sitting here, and I'm probably not here, ten, fifteen, twenty years later. And you've got thirty homeowners in here, and they're like, we're out. I'm just, I'm I'm, I'm just giving you an example.
It happens.
No, but let me tell you.
And they, they don't wanna do that, then we have to say no, because all of this language is in there, and then they go, well, here's our attorney's number.
Legally, here's the deal, an HOA, right, if you don't pay your dues, you go before the bank. Before their mortgage, and you foreclose them off, that's why condos in the old days didn't work.
And who, and who, and who files that?
Who does, the HOA.
Right, if the HOA is owned by all of the nine, it was called nine lots, nine members. That's a, that's a self adjudicating board, meaning they, they, they can't. But you're leaving, you're leaving language that says, well, we can so long as the board approves it.
Well, read it again, I, is this the, this last paragraph, or?
Yes, the trust shall not be terminated without prior written approval of the Rutland Planning Board.
Period, I agree with that, I'm not.
Then we're not arguing that.
I'll defer to other people, I'm just saying, you're leaving a loophole.
Yes.
To people that says, well, yeah, you can't, but if you go before the planning board, that's their decision.
Well, we gotta say, this trust remains in perpetuity and cannot be dissolved, period.
There we go.
That's fine.
That, I'm fine with that, that's kinda, that's kinda what we're getting at, I think we're saying the same thing, but I just. Yeah, and that's what I was looking for.
Okay, hold on, the trust remains in perpetuity and cannot be dissolved.
Cuz Cle, what I'm thinking of is, if everybody down the road owns their house, there's no mortgage, it's cash, and if, if say.
Excellent.
Seven of the nine all own their house, and wanna dissolve the HOA, the only remediation is court, is going to, is legal, and having their deed, having their deed. Quick deeded, I guess, to get rid of it, and I don't think they do that.
At some point, if if the HOA, I I I don't know, I mean, I. At some point, if if the HOA, I I I don't know. I mean, I I'm just.
I have been a part of HOAs that have dissolved, like when I worked for a large developer, I've seen that, and it's ugly.
Yeah.
And when they but when they are all on the same page, because they don't wanna pay the two fifty or four hundred, depending on what your fees are, and they're all conglomerated, it 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 is a disaster. And they they do go after the planning board, they go after the town, and they especially, well, there's a lot of other things, but I've seen it, it's just, it's messy. If we can put something like that in there that's kind of a nail.
And that's great. I mean, so.
I'm good with it. I'm good with it.
All right, so the only thing, the only thing that we have coming out of this is Cle, I will send you and George that paragraph, and you you guys can get back to me.
Okay.
Express your concerns about it, whatever you feel about it, and I can run it by town council. What's that?
You think you know my concerns?
Yeah, I think so.
I think it's about suspends.
Kinda vague about that.
Yeah.
So, all right, so, other than that, I think we're good. We've settled every other one, so that's great.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you, Cle.
Thank you.
And so, next meeting, I will have Chris here to discuss the whole water sewer line issue.
Yeah. I think we should think about what Joe, where Joe Buckley was coming from, and what Tim just said. They're paying water fees, they're paying sewer fees. They probably should have the line maintained.
Yeah.
I mean, I, and and that's the way it was set up to begin with.
Or else you could argue that the town is double charging them.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, because the town, you know.
Taxation without representation.
Oh, come on. Joe, and and again, I'm I'm speaking for Joe, I know he's gone, but his whole philosophy was, I wanna be in control of the lines in this town, so if something goes wrong, it's it's coming out of a specific fund. I'm repairing it to the standards that I want, and that's the end of the discussion.
And maybe if if they do maintain it, um, or if they do have to do something major to it, it comes out of the homeowner's fee. I mean, I, that's something that I could.
But they're not gonna have enough money to do that kind of work.
Well, I don't know, you know, there's really not that much. How many times have you seen the town out there in in one of, in a new subdivision, digging out a water liner, digging up a sewer liner? I mean, tho- those sewer lines are eight inches. I mean, you you don't have to put one big turd in there to block that up. I mean, you think about that.
My more concern is somebody decides they wanna do some landscaping work out front and a backhoe, takes a, sir boom.
Well, then they'd have to fix that.
Yeah.
No, no, but.
Flex tape.
Eye on eye.
Um, I don't mean to change, not change the subject, but ask a question, it's related but unrelated. How do you determine an HOA fee? Is it by the the value of the house or?
I.
How are they gonna know what they?
I can make a guess at it.
Yeah.
But you can say, okay, you get a price on plowing, so much a storm, you figure how many storms, and then you're not gonna have to touch the road for probably fifteen years, right? I mean, what what's gonna, unless it gets undermined or or it's built incorrectly or something like that, and then they're gonna come back and sue my ass.
I can give an example, Keith. My ex brother-in-law lives at Kendall Crossing in Natick, right across from the train station. It's a condo association, same thing. They wanted to do, they want to re-sign the entire complex. So the association went out, got quotes, and basically everyone got charged. They just, this amount divided by sixty units, this is how much everybody pays.
And that's called a special assessment. That is not, it's not, so the HOAs, your monthly fees are based off of whatever infrastructure, common landscaping, things like that, that, hey, we have to mow this retention pond, we have to spend a conservation or whatever, environmental scientists to look at it once a year, and make sure it's not silted up if it needs to be removed, things like that, like that all goes into it. Um, snow removal, obviously a big one, that's a, that's a dart at a board.
Brings up a good question. They're gonna have drainage in there, so they're gonna.
So, right, so all of all of those things are completely take, well, should be taken into account.
The HOA should have a spreadsheet with costs and.
They usually, yeah, so when you go to file with the state for an HOA, when you have your covenants and docs, there's usually, and I think as a developer, you have to put into kitty, you have to support, you have to put money into that. It was a ten, is it ten percent? It's usually like a ten percent number of, like, if you say it's a hundred thousand dollars a year for X amount of maintenance, until you relinquish control of the subdivision, uh, which there's also controls for that, right, in the state of mass, like, you can have it set up so that you don't relinquish control of an HOA as a developer, till you release the last lot, or the last lot closes.
Then you turn the money over to the.
Then you turn the money over to the HOA.
Till you've done.
So, yeah, and so that's, there's a hundred ways to kinda skin that cat, if you will. But the HOA dues are based off of what they think the maintenance, depending on what the HOA requires.
For the year.
And just so you know, I have to sign a pa- a paper for every closing. Even if like, I I built, let's say, Stony Brook Estates in Holden, right? I, that's been, that's been built and turned over to the town for ten, fifteen years now. Anybody sells their house, I'm still the president of the HOA. I have to sign off on their deed, on their, there's a document that goes with their closing that says that all HOA fees are paid. And and I and I still have to, to this day, because I've never relinquished the presidency of that, I still have to sign off on every one of them. So it it's a pretty tough, it's a pretty tough thing to get rid of an HOA, I can tell you that. Where there's only nine people, it might be a little bit easier, but I don't know. I mean.
We were just Cle, the the, and Kevin was in here, I think you were here. I just wanted to have some teeth in this HOA, because it's our first private road with private in Rutland to this size. And I, the other HOAs, it's a subdivision, the town owns the road, the HOA is basically just doing some maintenance there, snow, um, you know, on detention basis, not a big deal. But this was gonna be the whole shebang, so I just, and Kevin had even suggested that we put some teeth in this thing to make sure that there's monies and a good HOA document to cover the town.
Cause HOAs, as Britton said, HOAs can become a big headache.
Yeah.
For towns.
Yeah. And and the, my opinion, the best thing the homeowners could do is if down the road, get that road turned into a town road and get it turned over, and and then the mess is off their hands, and then they.
That would be their motivation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, that's it.
What about any gangles? HOA.
The old ones, yeah, they, I mean, they, you know, like, we, I mean, there's there's certain places where there's common area, right? The the open space, for example, let's say, we'd make the the island in the cul-de-sac and, you know, the it would it would go around like this. Well, that island is is open space. Who maintains it?
Well, that's why I think.
There's no HOA.
Yeah, I think the town took that out.
Yes.
The town took that out and doesn't have cul-de-sac island.
Now, they don't, but they.
In the past, we did, oh my.
That's a nightmare.
And you get one guy in the, in that cul-de-sac that might do the work.
Yeah.
He or she ever moves and.
Yeah. So I'd just like to say, remember, do you remember two or maybe three years ago, when I was trying to turn Maple Hill over? Maple Hill, uh, subdivision, Teresa Drive? The town came to me and said, we're not gonna take the road until you get the conservation restriction put in place. You know that it's still not in place. The town, the town just got, I mean, the state just got back to us last week with the approval of the of the of the conservation restriction. Last week, that's three years. Three years it took. Can you imagine?
You've been plowing that for three years?
I wouldn't be plowing it, no.
It was DEP?
It was a state, uh, I don't think it was a DEP, it was some state agency.
Cause they wanted a pla- a a snow plowing plan?
No, it was, this is common area, so it's a, it it's a conservation restriction on the open space.
Got it.
In Maple Hill. And they came to me, and I remember Ron was the, was the, uh.
TA at the time.
TA at the time, and he said, you know, how how can you make them do that? You never know when the state's gonna get back to them. Just approved it, just, just the other day, uh, after all that time. So. It's crazy to 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 hold your feet to the fire when you gotta wait, and I said that at the time, you know? Anyways, uh, and I do wanna just bring up one other thing.
Well, hold on, well.
Go ahead.
Well, what's on, what's on the agenda tonight? What's, what are you bringing up?
Uh, something to do, something to do with, uh, Britton Estates, Tim asked the question.
Okay.
Last meeting, and I said I'd bring the answer to this one.
Okay. We could do that in correspondence.
Yeah. Yeah. So go ahead, go ahead, Cle, cause I don't want you to sit, we don't want you sitting around.
Um, you asked about the walls.
Yes.
They're done. That's exactly the way they go, and the sidewalks go right up to them. Those, the the, all the top blocks, I checked. I checked with, uh, Mike, I checked with, uh, Franny, the guy that built them. Those walls are built exactly to plan.
How that, okay. Wow, okay.
So he his thing, you gotta, we gotta put a fence up, and the sidewalk is gonna be, is gonna be, end up being bitu- uh, not bituminous, it's gonna end up being poured concrete, because we can't get it, we can't get it to match. So we gotta do the, we gotta do the sidewalk, and then put the guardrail, because otherwise, we're not gonna be able to get in there and and make this, and if you remember, Norm, the bridge, the sidewalk on the bridge in Bear Hill, this concrete. That's the only way we're gonna do them.
So the guardrail actually is gonna be the only supporting safety feature. There'll be no concrete blocks stopping.
Nope.
Wow. Okay, I'm just, and Cle, this isn't a day new.
No.
This is the reason the, Tim, the engineer, wants those freaking plans before we go do any more approvals, because I I would have probably thrown a fit if that wall wouldn't have been up to at least the guardrail above her as a safety buffer for a vehicle. I I agree that that, um, and you're structural guy's a hell of an engineer. I respect him immensely. But I would have probably had a problem with that block not being up, at least at the guardrails level as a secondary safety feature for a vehicle. If it, if it.
God, I'm just even, because in a lot of places, the top blocks that are already in place, they're concave.
Yeah.
Yeah, those are concave.
Which doesn't.
One stopper tire, yeah.
That doesn't look like a finished wall.
Those, those are actually the top blocks.
Yeah.
I checked all, cause I, you know, I kind of agreed with you. I didn't think it was finished, but it it is.
Okay.
It's built according to spec.
That's strange.
Wow.
So, I, but I, if you go up.
Appreciate getting back to me, I'm just, I'm just.
If you go up higher, though, what's gonna hold the blocks anyway? There's nothing to hold them, unless they have some way of pinning them, but they don't pin, they just sat.
Oh, boy. Here's what it is. I'm not gonna argue the point, because I got, I got no leg to stand on.
Okay, but I, I mean, I, you know, I I did it the way it was.
No, I I I appreciate that. I just, next time, I'm gonna be more of a pain in the butt on the final plans, and we're not gonna pollute with subdivision until we have all the plans in place, because I know when we did this, we didn't have the crossings plans included in the drawing set, and we let it go. And Joe was okay with it, because he said, you know, I talked to the engineer, everything will be done correctly, so I'm not letting that happen again.
I will tell you this, it's it's not really possible. All all subdivision plans, when there's a wetland crossing, designed by others. It says it right on the plan. So it's, it for me to to have have it designed as a part of the subdivision, really doesn't work. But you can put teeth in the approval and say, design has to be approved.
Yeah.
Once, once it's done, you know what I mean?
We just didn't do that. We didn't do that.
Well, no, they, Joe approved it. Everybody, it was approved by the DPW. I mean, I didn't do that in a vacuum.
No, 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 I know, but we didn't see how it was gonna end up. That that that's where my struggle is. I didn't see the final.
What you're saying is it didn't, that particular final design didn't come before the board for a final approval.
No.
Although it was on the plan to say, designed by others.
Yep.
Of which was signed off.
Yep.
But there was no check and balance to say, okay, well, these open items need to come before the board.
That's, that's, yeah, that's.
And that's on us.
Yep, shame on the planning board. I just.
This whole thing still does not answer the question of how important is it to get those guardrails up ASAP?
Kevin says really important, if I read that email.
That's, that's a liability issue on.
The town.
No, on me.
On him.
On him. Well, actually, it'll be on everybody, because when.
Cause we just brought it up on public hearing.
Yeah. It'll be the shotgun effect when the lawyers get involved. Everybody.
They'll take everybody.
I'll get those up.
Whoever has the deepest pocket.
I gotta get the sidewalks built, you know, it's tricky in that area, because those roads, as you know, we skinned them down, remember?
Yeah, 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 yeah. If we could get it done before this winter.
Yeah.
Before the ice and snow come, that would make me feel a whole lot better.
I agree. I I'm gonna, I'll do my absolute best and I.
We've been lucky. We've got two winters with that already, two winters, I think.
Whatever you can do, Cle, that's a.
I will, absolutely.
That's for you and the town and everybody involved, even the residents, et cetera, so. All right, cool.
Okay.
Next, we have a public hearing.
Well, before we do that, is there any more? Cause there's Bryce Lemon Estates. There were some other correspondences we had.
Yeah, and further down on the agenda.
That's okay, the board, the board's already seen those.
I I will tell you that, if you want. If you wanna take that out of order, I would.
That's what I was gonna do, Norm, just get get Cle out of here and then, cause the.
Unless you want my input on some of your public hearing stuff, because it looks like you're changing something on me.
No, 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 no.
No, but as, we we finally connected all the drainage yesterday, and stabilized that whole bank and um, on phase three. That detention pond is one hundred percent complete.
Yeah.
And all the drainage is now, remember Kevin's letter?
Yeah.
Get that done as fast as you can. We're raising the structures, maybe as early as this Friday, but next week, we should have all catch basins open, everything working, and and it's all connected, it's all done. So, as of today.
On Bryce Lemon, right?
Yeah, phase three, which, that was a part of Kevin's, you know, he's afraid the road was getting, there was a lot of alligator cracks in it, it was getting degraded.
Yeah.
Yeah, and this, like I said, I took a trip up there today, and there is, there is an area, and I think Kevin mostly mentioned the edges of the roadway, but there's definitely a section uh, well up into the hill, that basically, to me, the the entire uh, base coat is alligator, across the entire roadway.
We might have to, might have to grind that.
Uh, so.
That'll be up to Kevin when we.
I was gonna say, before you, before you lay down anyone, I want Kevin to take another look at that.
Absolutely. He he would anyway. He would have to.
The other, and I I guess this is something that I need help from the board. Kevin was okay with the changes that you recommended. I just would like to get some red lines or something into us. Oh, okay.
But he asked for that first.
Okay, cause I wanted to make sure the.
We need him to cite that.
Yes, exactly.
He said that in his, in his, in his email, he said, I received a design sketch from Tom.
Yeah, yeah, we we just, we need the date and, uh, him saying, yep, it's good.
I think he said that, but.
He said he had no objections to the changes. I just wanna make sure it's documented. That's all I was looking for.
Okay.
Cause eventually, those are gonna become updated as-built plans. Those sketches should be updated.
And if we don't have a, if we don't have a document, not that this would happen in this particular instance, but if we'd have, if we had a document for an as-built that didn't match the plan, we'd say, why don't they match?
Yeah.
So, but it just covers everybody. It's it's super simple. It's just administrative stuff.
Yeah, that's all I was looking for, is I just wanna, I want A to go to B to go to C, that's it.
My biggest question is, on the retaining wall that was constructed, that that causes this chain and, or this change in plan. I guess I'm, I don't understand where where does that, and maybe this is a question for the board, not as much, Cle, but how was the homeowner able to construct a large retaining wall um, that directly affected engineered sets of plans for this particular lot? And how was that approved and gone through proper channels?
And that's, I was, Britton, to your question, I was gonna ask John at this meeting, is this something we as a board, because this is a subdivision under construction, can ask the?
What?
Anything over four foot has to have a building permit.
I'm getting to my sentence to ask, cause to Britton's point, we, me personally, I'd like to see something from the, uh, building inspector that shows that there's been a retaining wall approved, because you can't add a retaining wall to a piece of property without a building permit.
If it's under four feet, you can.
If it's under four feet, you can, but this says, all this says is, my understanding, hold on, a large retaining wall. If it's under four feet, you can, but this says, all this says is, my understanding, hold on, a large retaining wall. Immediately abrupting or changing drainage.
It's on a side hill like this, so the painting wall, it only sticks up above the ground, three or four feet, but.
Okay.
Starts down here, so we were trying, we were trying trench boxes, we were trying everything, finally I called Kevin, I said, Kevin. You gotta let me eliminate this manhole, just move it down past it, so I don't have to dig so deep, because it's, it, I don't know if you've seen the drainage there. It comes down a mountain like this, and and so Kevin said, look, just put a pipe on the end like a T. So when the water comes down that pipe, it doesn't smash into the other side of the catch basin, it it'll dis- disperse it like that. And 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 we did it, and he came down and inspected it, and he was good with it.
I'm fine.
Yeah, so those changes, though, like we just, again, dotting the i's, crossing the t's, we need that memorialized.
Yeah.
And was this retaining wall built in that easement for your drainage?
No, right on the damn edge of it, though.
But again.
That's what.
Again, this is what the board wants to see, field changes put onto a plan for our file.
That'll have to go on the as-bill plans.
It it will, but we don't wanna get an as-built and nothing looks like what was approved, and then we have to go back through, it's gonna waste your time.
Go through the ninety-one changes we had to deal with.
It's gonna, it's gonna wa- it's gonna waste Cleese's time, it's gonna waste our time, cause we don't have any documentation for those changes.
They have to get in a. Engineer plan.
Yeah.
And a building permit, so this wasn't oh.
Anything over four feet has to be structurally designed, that's that's the, that's the cut.
Okay, so what is it the board wants to see from Cleese?
I wanna, I wanna see from Kevin.
One at a time, please.
I I just.
Britton, go ahead.
Yeah, you go ahead.
I just, I wanna see something from Mr. Quinn that covers the changes in description and gives us an email saying.
For which development, Britton?
For Bryce Lemon.
Bryce Lemon, okay.
For the drainage, um summarizing and showing on a red line plan, the changes that have been approved. Per this drainage.
So basically, field changes.
Correct, field changes, yep.
That's all I wanna do, so we gotta document.
Yeah, no, it's fine, I I think we we did that, he asked for that right up front, he said, get me a sketch, I need to see it, and and we did. And he and he said, he does say that he.
Yeah, no, you, yeah, you you've done your, we just want it for our.
For your records, yes, that's right.
So when the the as-builds come in, those sketches are, the sketches are actually on the drawings now, and they can match up against something that was done in the field.
And we have Kevin's information, and he says, it's good.
Yeah, I'm still struggling with this retaining wall, so.
Retaining wall?
Tim, you wanna send me an email? Ask, I, Harold's on vacation this week, so I could check with him next week, ask him about a retaining wall, uh he can coordinate with Cleese.
Wait, hang on, hang on, we got a couple conversations going on.
Izzy B. Izzy B built it for that.
Let me tell you, scary, I'm not digging next to it.
I will send you an email and copy the board.
Is it over four feet? It is not over four.
I'm gonna ask anyhow.
It leveled off their backyard really nice, everybody up the street did it, they still go on and then.
I'm just gonna ask.
What's that?
I'll send you an email.
Yeah, send me an email, yep.
I just don't want something, you know, they put in and have it fail down the pike here and. Somebody didn't.
And then they're setting right here, that front seat, hey.
Why'd you allow that?
Yeah, why'd you allow this? I didn't own this home when it was installed.
Yeah, alright, good enough, thanks. Add those with the big.
Thank you, Cleese, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is that it for me?
Oh, just to, if you got the, has Yankee got him his report yet, cause he still doesn't have it.
For?
The Quail and Brittenell Estates. He's waiting the reports from the inspector from Yankee on the operation, on the gravel placed and.
Binder.
Binder, he hasn't got the report yet, Kevin hasn't. Okay, can you get that to him? Just copy John on it too, to keep him in.
I should have them, cause I get stuff from Yankee every five minutes, so.
Alright, I just saw that when I, he didn't have it, and I know this is the second time I think Kevin.
Gravel and and pavement at Quail Run, right?
Yep.
No, no, cause you said Brittenel, but that, Grizzlies all sat, right?
Yeah, he said, it was just Quail One Drive and Brittenell Estates was his request.
I think that was, what's the public hearing about?
It's basically just administrative changes, there's nothing of substance.
Okay. I just didn't want you changing something, without me.
No, no, no.
This is just doubling our fees.
Great, just says, yes, Mr. Blair's applications shall be. No, 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 no.
Well, thank you, everybody.
Thanks, please, for coming in, thanks for giving me that answer. Yep, and Karen, you didn't beat me up, so good.
Okay, so we are back to item four.
Yeah.
So, uh, let's open the public hearing to consider amendments to the subdivision regulations. And I believe we have a memorandum from John detailing.
Yep, we do, yep.
July thirtieth.
So basically, all this is?
Yeah, right here. I've reviewed this, I, I mean, I will, go ahead.
Yeah, so it's basically just administrative changes, it's clarification language, it's adding things in such as a butter's mailings. And adjacent community planning board mailings, to be consistent with our regulations for site plan review and special permit. Because these things were not contained in our subdivision rules and regulations for preliminary and definitive subdivisions. So I thought it'd be a good idea to add those, that language into the requirements, the application requirements for these, for consistency. And the rest is just cleaning things up, you know, just editorial things, instead of saying a filing fee, the, you know. They need to give the appropriate filing fee, um and just simplify, an electronic data storage, any, any computer generated. Or just a PDF version of the plan, things like that, and like I said, the major language that you see, the main paragraphs being added. Are just copied and pasted from our regulations on site plan review and special permits.
Only thing I was gonna ask, John, and I'm gonna need Britton's help on this, can we do PDF? And CAD file, do you see that, or is it just PDF?
Yes, well, that's completely dependent on the town, most towns don't have CAD.
Yeah.
Unless it's a DPW or um water department, and those departments are usually like a Natick, fairly large.
Yeah.
They will take CADs.
I I just, I'd ask, cause.
Yeah.
PDFs are great, but you can never fix them.
I'm with you.
And CAD, you can go back and have updates too, but I'm okay with PDF.
But the town wouldn't fix those.
No, but you could send, i- i- if they had to be, if, say Cleese went out of business and somebody else came in and and the town had to have things fixed. They had no drawing package.
You'd still have to go to the engineer.
The engineer has no drawings to, he'd have to recreate everything on the PDF, which costs money.
Well, hang on, so I, I'm, after just listening to you explain a little bit more, most towns re- will require a DWG file. On a subdivision, yes, absolutely, and that's because that goes to the town so that they can take measurements. If if an issue were to arise.
You can go in and.
You can go in and you can pull a measurement and say, alright, these, the approved DWG drawings off the same, the CAD is, or the CAD, excuse me. The PDF is for like town entities to review.
Yeah, right.
And say, yes, we sign off on this plan, but nine out of ten times, all of the, all the towns I've had approvals in, at a minimum. It's usually not CAD, it's DWG.
And that's what I should've said.
Yeah, a DWG file goes in and it's submitted on a um a zip drive to the town as an as-built.
That's what I was getting at, Britton.
So, cause they gotta know where the sewer is, and if you have large, uh you know, underground, um electric service, um things like that. And you have to marry all of those entities and give it to the town, so that when they have an emergency situation, they dig it, they see. These are for larger approvals, like in A and R, none of this, none of this makes sense.
I I I was thinking more on the subdivision, so so if if they ever did a GIS system.
So how about this, would we need that for preliminary or just definitive?
No, 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 that's, that's almost an as-built.
Yeah.
And it's at the end of the project, which we can't, we can't really enforce.
Oh, okay, alright.
But it should be in that determination.
So we could put that into our decision?
Correct.
Yes, yeah, that's.
Well, it should be a blanket on anything that's over a couple of lots, where we're bringing in, especially where we're bringing in public utilities, that should be a requirement. Now, you're gonna get some pushback on that, because that costs developers money, because now they have to go in and put a, they have to put a surveyor in there. To take shots as they lay the sewer line, and then not only just make sure that the slope is right. But then give you a directional asset left, right, you know, north, south, and exactly where that line is. So, you will get some pushback from developers on that, but in the overall interest of safety, you know, repairs, things like that. Like, every other town requires this as part of their as-built.
A lot of towns never did it twenty, thirty years ago, and now they're like, well, that sewer line isn't. Water line's sorta close.
Does anyone have any comments on?
No, this is good. The only comment I have, it's just, this is my personal opinion. Um, I think where you drive it home and item F under uh section uh four for application.
Yeah, no plan shall be deemed.
I think that's gotta be right at the top.
Okay, you want?
In in both instances, not just this one, but on the next one as well.
That's.
Take that, move it right to the top, I don't know if you can bold it, underline it, make it.
Italize.
Font size twenty, whatever, whatever works.
Okay, that's fine, yeah, I can do that.
Separate piece of paper, I would put that at the top, but that's just my opinion, yeah.
Is a DWG file something that doesn't sound like a.
It's AutoCAD.
Does it free, sound like freeware, so you'd have, the town has to have a product to view it.
But it's a common in the industry.
Yeah.
That, I mean, throughout, Weston and Sampson has it.
And the file is not editable, like, we can't, we can't go, right, we can't go in and like say, oh, well, the sewer, we're gonna move the sewer, you can't. It's strictly, right, it's strictly for.
As you guys know, this is proprietary stuff when an engineer creates.
Something we could send to Quinn Engineering, and they, they use it.
Correct, yeah, anybody, Stan Tech, um Weston and Sampson, Kevin. They all have AutoCAD, cause that's typically what they produce their drawings out of.
Just note, like I said, you're gonna get pushback, but those PDFs are created off of the DWG file. So it's not, it it, they're literally hitting print to PDF.
Yeah.
It's not a heavy lift, it's just, they don't, they're really, they're really uptight about giving a town a DWG. But I can tell you, in every, every place I've done a subdivision, it's absolutely required, yeah.
We should be up to that standard too.
Yeah.
Okay.
So is that it for changes to what was presented?
Is that something we should talk about in the future, Norm?
Well, that would be potential condition of approval for when we have a subdivision.
No, I'm I'm talking about Noble Hill, which has all been signed off, but so many years ago. Does that, because now we have newer bylaws or new pots to it.
Now, what, that's already been approved, you'd have to go back and amend the decision.
Well, good, we'll make.
You can ask him for it.
No, we'll make him give us a three and a half inch floppy as it was approved back, and let him see that. Yeah. You hear the crunching?
That's Lee, you got two choices, give me DWG or three and a half inch floppy, your choice.
Uh, yeah, he wouldn't have to, but I wouldn't see why he wouldn't, it's, it's an easy.
Well, I I don't assume anything.
I feel that sometime in the near future, because he went and said that maybe in the springtime, he might be starting this project.
Yeah, Noble Hill.
And I want at least everybody here to go through it.
Okay, can we focus on the public hearing stuff?
Well, I think the public, do we need to close, or a motion to close the public hearing?
I think we have to approve this, correct?
Well, yeah, we only have just that one tiny, tiny question.
Yeah.
On both preliminary and definitive plans on the butter nail, adjacent, adjacent, adjacent community planning board nailings.
Yes.
It seems to me that we always included CMRPC.
Hmm, you don't have to, no, that, I've never heard of that, no, it's just adjacent towns.
I thought.
Cause why would CMRPC have to know about a subdivision?
It wasn't labeled as CMRPC, it was uh local planning board sub, you know, regional planning board authority or something like.
No, I've never, I've never done that, and that's usually for um zoning, zoning bylaw changes, yes, CMRPC.
Yeah.
Gets legal for those, and so does.
Maybe, maybe that's it.
Yeah, it's, 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 yeah, for town meeting stuff, yeah.
Okay. Well, with that, I have a motion to close the hearing.
So moved, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And with that, a motion to adopt.
With the amendment by Britton, to move that item to the top.
So moved.
Keep it simple.
Gotta get Dick out of here.
Let me do, what do you write down when someone just says so?
Um, so in this case, I would rate motion to adopt this presented with one amendment as discussed.
Yes.
Okay.
There you go. Psychic, she's psychic. It's not my first time.
Not my first rodeo.
Okay, did I have a second? Second, any discussion that I left? Hearing on, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, so once I get these incorporated, I already uh updated the subdivision rules and regs with the chief's changes. So I will work on this um in the coming days, and as soon as I do, I'll get new copies on the webs, new version on the website, and new copies to you all.
I know we went through most of the correspondences, but there was one in there for the bond estimate, did we do anything with that?
No, he hasn't gotten that yet, that was just a request from Cleese, he's having, he's not working on that.
Okay, that's it, alright, good enough, I saw that and I was like, is that completion, or do we need to talk about it, so, okay.
Okay, uh basically, pretty much our final item, town planner report, fee survey table, and I'm all.
So Tim had mentioned at a previous meeting the desire to have a fee survey done, so I did. I I searched towns in Massachusetts with uh similar populations, so we were comparing apples to apples. And without belaboring the point, my recommendation is, we don't need to do anything with our fees, because they are either.
Eight years ago, Norm, when I did this, I made us some money.
Yeah, because we are either on.
Been eight years since I did this.
We are either on par with the other communities.
I make a recommendation, we go to zero.
We're either on par with other towns, or we're higher than other towns.
Cause I remember I went to, and there were some, we were a little bit higher than some, and like.
Well, if you look at some of these, not for nothing, if you look at some of these towns, high commercial.
Yeah, well, they, so they can live with the lower cost of the residents.
Couple of these towns have commercial entities, large commercial entities, malls, cinemas. Even though they're the same population, we're talking, these are not apples and apples, so.
I think we're good, leave it alone and move on.
Can I just ask for a direction from the board on the delegate situation?
Oh, yes, let's, let's put this under uh. Discussion not reasonably anticipated within forty-eight hours, Tamika?
Um, so I was contacted by CMRPC um a couple of weeks ago, or last week, actually. And there was a misunderstanding of who appoints which delegates. Um, and they very much would like to know who the town's delegates are, so. The planning board is responsible for appointing one full delegate, that person must be a member of the planning board. The select board is responsible for the other full delegate and the alternate. So, my plan was to bring those two folks to the select board at their August nineteenth meeting. But I need to know who you would like as the full delegate and the alternate delegate. And then you guys have to confirm your appointment for the other full delegate, it cannot be John, because everybody has to be a resident of Rutland.
I'm confused, I thought we had three full delegates.
We only have two. I talked to, that came straight from CMRPC last week.
Cut this back. Yeah, okay, well, I just put a letter in, so, Dick, were you select boards? Planning board, so who is the select for full delegate?
It wasn't.
Or they just have an alternate?
Had an alternate. We just have only one delegate and an alternate, right?
That's right, so we do get a second one.
Yeah, you have two.
And I just put the letter in to Tamika today, cause I was dragging my feet for the full. CMRPC delegate for the select board.
So then why don't we keep yours for the select board, and then you have to choose who you'd like to be the alternate for the select board to appoint? I had thought it was Keith, but after talking to Keith, I'm not sure Keith wants.
For the planning board, aren't you?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you guys.
Cause we voted on that.
Okay, so Keith is the full, so you just have to decide who the alternate is gonna be.
Don't look at me.
Yeah, no, no, I, you can leave that open as far, I mean.
Between CIPC and this, I'm, I'm.
So, I thought.
But I just, I don't wanna let you down.
If I'm wrong, the, I thought the planning board got one full delegate that we control. And that's why I sent the letter to you and the select for, cause I didn't think the planning board had anything to do with the decision what the select board puts in as as that.
The way they explained is that the planning board gets to appoint one full delegate, and that delegate has to be a member of the planning board.
Okay.
The other delegate and the alternate do not have to be members of the planning board, but they do have to be Rutland residents. So initially, you guys had appointed, had this.
Don't they, Tamika?
Right, but they appointed John, and John can't be the alternate.
Okay.
Because he's not a Rutland resident.
So we have to inform the select when they have to appoint someone else.
Right, so you need another alternate.
And I just put my name in for the full delegate for the select board.
Yep.
Cause I was, and that's, I said, I was alternate, I wanna move to full, because that position opened up, so.
Yep, so I'll bring that forward, and then we'll keep your appointment for Keith as full as your planning board appointment, we just need to know an alternate.
I would probably let them find one, cause.
That's what I'm gonna say.
Cause there's none here, I mean.
Okay.
We're running low.
Yeah, we're running low on bodies. It's my thought, I mean.
They can.
I agree. Put it out on the website and see who wants to step up.
Okay.
Thank you for your guidance.
It isn't, somebody would come in and sit down, listen to all our.
Oh, we need to talk about it. So I'll put that on the next agenda.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Okay, anybody else have anything?
We got this, no, I guess.
You do?
Is there anything else? No, just cut the last. Where did I write it?
Where did I write it? Well, it wasn't there, anyhow, um. Agraturism, your, your doohickey for the lilac hedge. Is there anything in there? What time they gotta stop the music?
Oh, you're.
And how loud?
I'd have to look at the decision.
Yeah, the decisions were written different for each farm, they each have different requirements.
I think there are hours.
But.
I don't think there's anything.
Lilac and Schultz's were, and and, we can verify this, they were given a lot more latitude than the first one that we wrote that was really specific. So I think lilac, it was a broad decision, as opposed when we did, which isn't in existence anymore, um, the, and I'm having a brain.
Yeah, I know.
The other, the uh.
Down below man's.
Yes, that was specific to hours, times, all that stuff, and we did lilac and Schultz's, we opened it up, but somebody, John, I guess you can look at that.
Yeah, I'd have to look at the decision.
Yeah, it's in, it's in the folder.
What's because of the, this past weekend, it was uh, Saturday, not so much Sunday, but Saturday. Normally, they quit at nine, you know, they might run a little bit over, but not by, you know, ten minutes or something like that, and that's not bad. But my nephew was so, it was so loud, kept the kids up, you know, he's only got uh, four and a six year old.
Honestly, I, I wish this had been brought to our attention before tonight, cause I could've investigated and had an answer already.
You got time.
Well, no, but.
I do know that Labor Day is, they got, they've got a lot of concerts or um, uh, bands coming in, so if there is, if that's a concern, then.
And not only, you know, because you heard about the bonfire, and how Wachusett Street was packed with cars, it was over, you know, it's supposed to have been over two thousand people there.
Oh, really?
Yes, and.
So it overflowed.
Overflowed, and and to me, for kinda loud, for emergency uses, you know, you're trying to get uh, fire trucks and stuff down the road, you you can't block Wachusett, because. That's the route to, if we have to get to Princeton quick.
Everybody.
Yeah, so, there's a couple of little things in there that I think need to be looked at and checked. And uh.
Well, the public safety thing like that, I mean, that's, takes precedent no matter what may be in a decision.
Yeah.
So that's chief of police, like he's gotta, he would be the one to come in and say.
And Seth would handle the uh, fire and ambulance side.
If you're gonna have a bonfire, where are the fire trucks, where's the fire control?
How do you know how many people are, they, they were anticipating, and they had Randy packing cars and other fields and everything else, they loaded all the fields, and there was still no place, so they said, you know, put them on the road.
That's, that's up to the chief, he's the, he's the end all be all with that, so, but I, I know what you're saying, yeah, that's.
I'm sure if they're not selling tickets, they don't know how many people are gonna show up.
Yeah.
And then all of a sudden, if it, if it gets out of, not out of control, but it's obviously, you can't.
You're raising the risk of an issue.
And they don't have a parking, maybe they don't have really, like you said, Randy was helping out, but.
Oh, yeah.
If it gets too much for even him, then then what do you do, and I guess maybe he should consider, what do, do we have a plan for a thousand people, and do we have a plan for two thousand people? Cause we can hit two thousand apparently.
Yeah.
If, if someone's counted really that.
And that'll happen Labor Day weekend from what?
Yes.
I can already gather.
That's coming.
It's gonna be a huge turnout, unless it's rainy weather.
Was there anything fancy going on last week?
Or was it just?
No, it just.
Whoever, this is all speculation, we don't know.
They had a big draw.
They, it was very loud.
Okay.
So here's, so here's the thing, I I really don't feel comfortable with this discussion, because we're throwing generalities out there when we don't know if there was actually a violation or a problem, that's dangerous. So, if there's, if there's an issue, then you need to contact myself, the building commissioner is also enforces zoning, the police chief, if it's a traffic situation. Um, because, you know, again, I would rather have this handled with a communication during the work hours, and that way I could've already been investigating it, rather than waiting until the meeting, where. Now I have to wait till tomorrow and start the process, and Harold's already on vacation, so, um, this is something that could be handled administratively, but we need facts, we don't need, we, we need to know. Hey, this is what time they went to, hey, this is, you know, and that way we can see if there was a violation or not, because this, this information is all very generalized. And it was loud, okay, it was loud.
The young lady up there, you know, because.
But I don't think the town has a, has a noise bylaw, noise ordinance.
Sent a message up to her and got a real snide remark back.
So somebody's reported this, Nick?
They said that, that they are loud if they have to to, now I can't remember what they call it, um, the band can play again for a little bit longer.
I guess from my own edification.
Look at it and figure out what's going on.
We don't have this scanned in anywhere, do we?
Well, but that's the issue, is, yeah, we do, we do, but it's in our decisions.
That's what I meant.
Which is at the office, so, no, I would rather have this type of thing, we need specifics, you know, we, we, you know, if there's gonna be a complaint or something. We need, we need concrete information as far as it went until this hour, as far as noise, I don't think we have a noise ordinance.
We don't.
We don't.
We do not, there's a state noise.
Something's gotta happen, because I'm, I'm, where's, where's my coyotes?
But this, but this is handled through town departments.
They don't come around that night anymore.
Is this?
John will investigate.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm assuming you would contact police, see if they had any.
Well, hold on, what, what projects we talking about, we're talking about lilac, which ones are we talking about?
Just lilac.
Just lilac, okay.
But it might, it might trickle over, because I'm thinking of loud noise, you know, if, if, if they have extra speakers or whatever heck it was that they did up there to, to blast it.
Well, let's see what John finds out.
Yeah, I, I think this, Dick, can all be handled once John does the investigation.
Yeah, investigation, I will.
Well, when I say investigation, knowing what their decision is, cause I don't know it off the top of my head, I mean, the last time I had to go over and grab files to discuss the other individuals, because. There was wild accusations being made, and I wanted facts, so I went and grabbed the damn file, looked at it, and brought the facts to the select board, cause they didn't have the facts. But we got that squared away, so in this case, I'd rather have the facts, so if there is an issue, instead of blowing it up, you can talk to lilac and say, listen, there's been some discussion.
Well, I wouldn't talk to them directly, that's not my place. I don't have, I don't have any enforcement capability, but.
This is the, well, if he's not here, who's the backup to the tech, who, I'm not asking you, so I'm asking the board.
We'd wait for him to get back from vacation first of all, if, if it's traffic, then it's the police chief, like Britain said, so.
Well, no, it's the, the backup to the uh, uh, zoning enforcement officers, the town administrator, correct, am I wrong?
But he doesn't have any zoning enforcement capability, you know.
I think it's usually the alternate.
Which we don't have.
We have an alternate, but Harold will be back on Monday.
Yeah.
Okay, then it's not, I just, I, I, I don't want this to blow up into a big issue, it's, I mean, they've been really, lilac and Schultz's have been good.
Really wish that it had been handled outside of this meeting, I, I wish there'd been communication before this meeting, rather than waiting till the public meeting to br- to bring the general stuff forward with no specifics.
It's been brought up and we'll investigate it and.
Yep.
And then we'll go.
Where the one that came up with, with this agro thing anyways, and it was, you know, is it something in our or?
That needs to be addressed in the future.
Needs to be for addressed in the future, you know, and.
Well, the neighbors don't know, so maybe they're, maybe they're, they don't know, so if they find, if we can generally tell.